And now we can call the meeting in order. This is a meeting of the four on January ninth, twenty twenty-three for the board of park district commissioners for the Lake Forest Park District in Lake County, Illinois. Thirty-seven. Um, and we're calling the meeting to order. Marcia, would you please hold on?
Commissioner Greenfield.
Erin.
Commissioner Elaine.
Here.
Commissioner Raymore.
Here.
Commissioner Reader.
Here.
Commissioner Walsh.
Here.
Mr. Weber.
Here.
President Beeler.
Here. Uh, next week we have a motion for the approval of the agenda for this evening.
Commissioner Greenfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Elaine.
Yes.
Commissioner Raymore.
Yeah.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Walsh.
Yeah.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
President Beeler.
Yes. Next on our agenda is the stated visitors. This allows um an opportunity for citizens who are here tonight, either in the presence of the person or will resume to address the board. Uh, if there is anyone for a citizen who would like to speak, is there anyone who would like to say? Saying yes, no hands are raised over there. Gentlemen, there is one on the Zoom who would like to make a statement.
Uh, there is one guest, but no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Um, onto our verbal communications. We'll be the board president to report. Um. Welcome everybody to twenty twenty-three. This is a very exciting event about this year. Um, just a quick update on a couple of things. Uh, Jim, I'm going to just go with your free people. Oh, never mind. You guys will open up on the show or you have a business. Um. I feel like I'm going away to camp. I'm going to go to the twenty twenty-three Soren to Youth Lights I A P P conference, which I'm very excited about. So I get to join Jim and Wolf and Noah and John to be a participant in this uh, to the Y F A conference. No one, okay? Um, so if there's anybody who's looking at this and wants to meet with us, I think we should have everybody. Um, I do want to somebody to come over before I go. I'm looking for some kind of overnight, but there was the opportunity to do that. Um, but I'm really looking forward to it. And also there's the opportunity for the answer with um Derek Sutcliffe, we're going to be having on on the evening's net. So with everybody for this week. Um, so moving on from there, we have under our new listeners, uh, what everyone's going to talk about tonight, uh, and the portion of the also the Alan Ryan, who's a consultant of the friends, and John Hirsch, who's president of the friends, um, of discussion about the goals, the fundraising, and what we're looking for for uh, this year and then beyond. We had a wonderful uh, presentation before, and I think we all came away very um uh, you know, into a speech over the land, we moved on YouTube, but last year we talked to us about what um, the direction will be for the friends coming up. As we know, um, as I said, just as part of the friends meeting from here, we have outlined on our goals for twenty twenty-three budget, we have four thousand dollars that we put um, friends and from the donations. Uh, there's a little bit more in this budget for twenty twenty-three because there's the commitment by the friends to raise money for the technical court, which has already been built. But the thought is, there is money there. Um, the question is, how do we vote together on a annual basis? And hearing from John, hearing from Alan before, um, it was the direction of the friends now to work more strategically, to work with the board, to work with staff as to how can we have a unified vision about fundraising, not just short-term. And that's really what I think this will change our direction was more to work within alliance with the friends to be able to do that. Um, gentlemen, I'm going to turn up a little quickly because one of the things that was brought up with the friends was um, hosting a meeting with the three groups together, staff, uh, friends and um, the park district board. Do you want to speak at that?
Sure. Uh, John Hershey again, and thanks for having me uh, for your board meeting. Um, so a couple of things that I wanted to touch on about what we're talking about. Uh, one of the things is, I know we generated a lot of excitement. So the first thing I want to do is to caution about the present state of things, that we are not going to raise, you know, five hundred dollars next year or over the next ten years. You know, when I first started on the board, if we raised five to eight thousand, and I don't have been on the board for a few years. If we raised five to eight thousand dollars, that was like my banner here. And last night I just looked at the number, we raised three thousand dollars. If we raised more, we could afford that. And so we've gone, come a long way. You know, we, we have a vision of where we want to go. And I think the feedback that I've gotten from the park board and from the staff and from Ellen and from my own board is, we need a tighter coordination. So there's things that we need to do to communicate better. We need more information. We need uh, information about what the needs are. And not just the, oh, well, we need a playground here, we need this to be funded. We need to earn it in because we're the people who are going to be selling the story to the donors. That as we need to pay the methods to the donors, we need to have this information. So uh, about, you know, I was somewhat shocked to learn just two months ago that Lake Bluff gets fifty percent of its park district. Operating costs are paid by appropriate versus the tax. And if you were to tell me, and again, I think that's pretty important, I think that's a question of the game. I didn't know that that we're relying on program fees to cover fifty percent of our average. I would have said ah, the tax level must be covered in the multiple. And that's not the case. So we as a board, we need more information about what the needs are. And to be able to craft a narrative to communicate, to public that, hey, this is, this is where we're at. This is real talk about what the needs are and about what we need from our public. And if you're willing to donate that and support us, great. Uh, there's other things that we need to grow. And one of the things is a reliable software donor tracking mechanism that we can say, hey, because right now, like literally, and again, part of this due to turnover and part of this due to not having systems in place. Right now, we're lucky if we have an Excel spreadsheet with who donated what. And so in terms of taking a donor to say, hey, this person supported paddle, this person supported the golf course, this person supported the preschool, uh, this person supported all food. You know, we hardly have that information. And when you're talking about stewarding donors from, okay, they enter in as maybe they send it to preschool or send it against camp. Maybe they're joining, you know, sailing, maybe they join uh, the golf course, maybe they uh, repaddle. You know, taking those people and stewarding them from one level of donor to the next level to where they're making larger and larger commitments because they're being valuable. They're being uh, steward basically is what it, what it is. We haven't really had the ability to do that. And uh, part of the tracking mechanism, part of these systems, uh, but we need some help from the board, uh, this board. And the other part is that we need to have a more uh understanding amongst all of us, not just the park board and the friends, but also the staff, what are the needs? What are the deficiencies? How can we better work together? And then for us, the other thing, okay, well, this is the direction the park board goes. We need the friends to do these things. And for us to be able to think, okay, well, we can do this, but we can't do that because we support our family. And say, okay, well, not realistic for us to raise three million dollars, but it could be realistic for us to raise a hundred thousand dollars. And a hundred and fifty thousand in the year past, and two hundred and fifty thousand in the next year. Those are things that we can thought about. But again, I want to have real conversations where we're operating from this same playbook. And right now, I really feel like the three of us are not. And so what we would like to do is to have a retreat of sorts. Uh, a couple hours, and I don't know when it would be exactly, but I would like it to be before the end of tomorrow. That helps us to find our individual objectives. And allows us as a board to go back and say, okay, these are the things that the park board has said are important to them that we need to be working. And then we can come to you and say, these are the things that we need from you to get to your vision. And then we can also come to the staff and say, hey, this is the information that we need to be able to craft a narrative to be able to communicate to our donor base. Hey, these are the needs that the park district has, and would you be willing to support us? So it's really a free, it's getting us all on some page and coming up with a future vision of what is possible. And then having us go back and really work on executing it. You know, Ellen and I did come and talk uh to you about a month and a half ago. And really Ellen was saying kind of a catalyst for us of ideas in recognizing where our deficiencies are, that where we can improve. And my hope is that we can have this meeting, we can learn more about what you all have in mind, of what you'd like to see us focusing our energy on. And then we can also communicate what we need from you and from the staff, so that we can go and execute that. And so that we can be as effective as a board, and that's our objective. So, questions?
We thought about the retreat, you know, Josh.
We'd like to have a retreat and hopefully before the end of March. And the idea would be, it would be a two to three hour uh, event where the park board will be there, the friends board will be there, and key staff who interact with both of us could also be there.
The retreats of the Y F A conference, I think we stood over the edge of the old forest college. Um, but yeah, kind of say, kind of look as to really constitution for those who think about this um, in a different way, not in the sort of meeting or something, but it's still getting to follow some of the meeting, the level of the media. Um, so when this just brought up, the community retreats, um, at a meeting on all three, uh, staff, the board, and the friends, I think it would be very just hearing your trustees speak, they want that kind of flow, they want um, and I think that really, we've identified capital means, we've identified um, that I mean longer goals for us in terms of the pool, in terms of of the beach and what is realistic to be able to care with the friends to be able to say, on a long-term basis, following what's coming, or on a short-term basis, following the purpose. And we're going for a long, longer, this is really listening.
I, I think the bigger component is that it's being able, it's opening the financial books and having transparency about what are the financial constraints that are, are um affecting the park district dramatically. And knowing what those are and how that compares to our peer park districts. I think there are some anomalies within the Lake Bluff Park District that other park districts aren't having to face. Um, and that being able to effectively articulate what those challenges are. If, if Jennifer says the same thing to our friend Jill, and then I say the same thing to Jill, Jill has a greater sense of confidence that this isn't one person's narrative. It's a shared narrative on the part of the friends, on the part of the park district, and on the part of the staff. And it's, it's building a playbook, it's building a common vocabulary. Uh, these are why these difficult decisions are being made. And these are what are affecting it and be able to have it in our hip pocket and be able to pull it out on endowment. And I think what happens is it, it builds goodwill and, and, and trust. And that, you know, that's effective for you when you wish to get re-elected, if you wish to. But it's even more critical when someone's making a nonprofit decision. And the more transparent we can be about this is where we are, how we got here, we can craft the language of how your good stores of the tax dollar and how then the friends will be good stores of your charitable dollar. And I think it's building that common language and it's shared expectations. The, you know, the friends board has expectations of the commissioners and of the staff. And the commissioner, because he managed the staff or through your, your executive director, you know, is that a fair expectation? We need to come to consensus. Is X percent of John's time or whatever the staff time dedicated to doing the work of the friends, a good investment? Can you endorse that? Is that going to be part of your um, assessment of your executive director? Um, that way, if we think of it as a three-legged stool, not one leg, it's trying to hold up the whole enterprise. It's three solid legs working together to make this great stool. So it's not very glamorous to talk about stool, but I think you did get the point. So it, 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 it seems kind of touching feely, but in the, in the meeting prior, we talked about getting key metrics ahead of time and having reading available to each of the participants. And then having, I think it will take John, Jennifer, and, and John Beeler to sit in a room. Here are the key questions that we have to have answered after we walk out of being in this room together. So it will be very targeted, very focused, and, and kind of uncomfortable, I bet. Um, but it's no more uncomfortable than you having to figure out how something can be get.
I, I use, and now that I've heard this talking all the time, but I will think over like this sense, pictures of what the pool was like on the inside. Um, yeah. Um, and just thinking about, you know, long-range part of the pool, we can, we can then, we can re-rear, we can this group to be responsible for the pool for the next several, several years. Um, but if we were to do a, a capital campaign for the pool, to say, we know we need to raise funds because as John Beeler told us, the grants that could be available to us, certainly we imagine, or we would have to provide in those kinds of things. And so how do we work with the friends to say, this is, this is their long-term vision, how many years out could we be able to be able to look for a grant and be able to raise these kinds of funds and be prepared for these kinds of things? We're in a better shape with this group than we had before, but now as we build into those reserves and working with the funds effectively so that they have the um, shared vision and going to get the shared um, goals and and I want to think, yeah, along too, because really the messaging, one of the things they talked about too was um, they had one person from the friends who's seen on social media and how can they look toward sharing that kind of responsibility. And we got now some long in with much of, she became, I think this is because he said it was that for the quarter of the year. Um, yeah, but getting that messaging out now just from the park district, we've been also we have others to move toward fundraising, kind of look toward um, the important assets that we need to be in.
Can I just say something more quickly? And this is what I wanted to say at the beginning. Um, you know, for a long time, the park district themselves, we've had a wonderful sort of donation burn of the benches and the trees and gardens, things along those lines that helped raise money in the park district. And a lot of those since states didn't disrepair. The bench over on twelve, I think that was dedicated to the family who donated the land for the golf course. That bench was ripped out and it's gone, it's been gone for years. And you look at the memorial gardens that are at the golf course, look at some of the, the tree, the other memorial stone that's kind of been shoved into the corner. And a lot of the people who have donated those benches, those trees, those stones, you know, they did that for a very particular reason, for a very and those things have fallen in disrepair, a lot of them. And it's, it's not the park district's fault. I know it's not the park district's fault to keep those things up. But when it comes to selecting donations for our citizens, they're walking the golf course and they're seeing that the benches for the family that donated the land to the golf course has been ripped out anonymously, right? It kind of sends a message of what we're saying to the past donors of, thanks for the loan, we'll give you a stone, see you later. So I, I would love to challenge the friends, I think this would be an excellent thing for the friends to take on, is to start helping to repair those things. Reinstalling those benches and helping the park district make a commitment that when those donations are made, that we will commit ourselves to keeping them in repair in perpetuity, so that we can encourage more people to donate. And they know that those donations will last for a very long. That's all.
And you know, sorry, David, I love you, but I got to push back a little bit on that one, right? If I, if I write a check for a donation for a badge or something like that, I know there's a beautiful one, right? And I know in twenty years, you know, without elements per, however many days a year, that is going to fall out, like I said. Like, if I really care about that, I want to see it there. Like, I, I have a bench that's completely donated by our region. And in ten years, that thing's getting a little corroded. It's not gonna be easy. And if, if that's what you believe, Scott, then it's, I think it is.
It's a good, you know, it's the one you started with, that Noah's out, he's terrible in. So, um, that's in the recovery, but um, Noah was a little told the same thing to us. You're making a two thousand dollar donation for a fence, it's all going good, you're, you're slating it, it's all beating up, or it's being lost on the sauce or something. So maybe that is the challenge, comes to say, um.
It's hard to get me to pay twenty dollars if you're giving me a, you know, a standing to the knuckle, but it's terrible. But you don't have to say round.
It's, it's then, it's also a, um, the
We
I may take a little apart, I'll be glad to say it's not just two thousand dollars for that, but it's also, what, what are you doing?
It raises the question, what are you promising your donors? And are you living on to that? And whether, you know, however that is addressed, these are the certain things that need to be asked when, when a gift is requested and, and given, what are obligations? And is there a shared understanding what each person's obligation is? And it's, that's really important in terms of stewarding gifts on the wire.
Especially when you start to move up the ladder and you're talking about asking for fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, more than that type of money. All those kinds of things you can have. And the donor needs to feel confident that you're willing to value your, your, you know, so there's plenty of ways to donate the money. Other than the financial or the, like, well, by the way. One thing I want to say also in the whole discussion, that fundraising is not magic, that mine, when money doesn't fall on heaven and people decide to donate because the, it'll be needed in the budget. I mean, I want to be real about that. Fundraising takes time and takes commitment, takes energy. And I'm telling you, people around the board, or for you myself, are willing to exert that energy. What we're asking for from you and from the staff, cooperation to help us effectively do that, and to come up with an overall strategy and policy. And so we're here, we're saving our, everything is with you, and we're willing to give it one hundred and fifty percent, but it's not magic. And money isn't just going to magic actually. We have twenty-seven hundred households in Lake Bluff. Some of them don't know, these are the people that work, operate them. And the number of corporations and so forth are big, million. But we do have resources and we can build, we don't need a lot of money, that's not inconceivable. But it takes time, it takes energy, it takes commitment, and takes a shared responsibility. And uh, it's not going to happen well, thank you. And so what we're asking tonight is for this board, make a commitment to us to say, let's have this uh, retreat, let's come up with an overall strategy where we're all speaking, probably saying, you know, we're all talking in the same language, and that we start to craft a narrative where we can go out and share this donor's network uh, with the public. And it's a shared mission. If you were talking about it, I was talking about, Ellen was talking about, Kevin was talking about, Scott's talking about. And anybody, we would all be saying the same thing. These are the needs, this is our objective, this is what we're working for, this is our vision for this town. And this is why we're doing this, this is why we're working. And if we can have that shared vision and shared communication with the public, we're going to win most, uh, significantly. So that's my objective, based upon a lot of things that's known. I mean, this is a great way for us to build as an organization, the friends. The way that we're going to build up our contribution to your budget is by doing straight amount of money. But if we want to get to the numbers that we're talking about, or anywhere near, we need this uh, going.
I don't think it's something that you, but yeah, do you want to mine a little bit of the logistics down, that like, who would be leading the battle? But I think the retreat.
Ellen, you would be helping to lead the retreat.
I, I think what it could be is that there would be some breakout groups that we would have, um, but we would have the key questions. Um, there are things like, is it better to raise endowment for, for the pool than to pay for the capital cost through donated dollars? Because then you fix your structural deficit issue where you're deploying maintenance and, and you're raising funds. You know, what is the role of returnable dollar with a fixed asset like that? Um, it, it's being able to answer those questions for potential donors. Is there, you know, is it solely a charitable conversation because there's no room in the budget to pay for something that this size of community can't really afford? It's, it's having that level of difficult conversation. And it doesn't mean that we're going to come to some conclusion about that. But it, it's also being able to have the staff tell us, if, let's say the pool were completely fixed overnight, what is that, what is the, the capital maintenance budget for that? What is the maintenance budget for this building? Do the fees from program, you know, membership actually cover the cost of operating the, 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 the fitness center? Or does it go in and there's extra revenue that's actually going to pay for maintenance of the building? What is the billing cost to operate? It, it's, if we can't answer these questions internally, going through a prospective donor to ask for a million dollars, they don't want to fund something that is only going to be partially funded and, and will run the law. So it's getting really into the, the meat of the finances of the park district.
And I think there was a program in June, February twenty eighteen, the hundred and ten percent, did that, did that sound similar to what was done then?
It is.
Correct, I got it, yeah.
But it helps to identify those, since those, um.
Well, what it did was, it, the board decided what the continuum looked like, you know, what would be a hundred and ten percent of that. You know, that the program would have to be covered by some old deeds and like a park wouldn't be. So that would be taxpayer dollars, it would be the tax budget.
Right, but to get to that answer, you'd have to know where the delta is between
Yes.
the cost and, and the
And that's, I mean, that's information that we as events don't have. And it's, it's awfully difficult to craft a narrative to those donors, especially when you're talking about high-end work going who are going to be donating a lot. And potentially, it's our goal is to try to cultivate those types of donors to go to them and say, well, I don't know, that's information that I don't have, or whatever. It, it's, it's very difficult to convince people to commit their charitable dollars without being able to say, okay, this is where we're at, this is what we're doing, this is why we're doing it. And, and all of us can do things in it. So ultimately, that's the hope that we So ultimately, that's the hope that we can create. And not just the one meeting, you know, this one retreat, but we start a conversation. I mean, there's barely been, happened on a fence, there's, there's barely been any fence at all with, with the park board, other than the people who are actually on the park board. Uh, most of the time, we might see each other. So the idea is to bring us both together, because we both need each other. I mean, ultimately, we're here to serve you, to serve this park district. That's what we're here to make this place better, like, make this town better. I mean, that's why I'm here, I don't get paid for it, you guys don't get paid for this. I mean, I'm here at the end of the day to try to make things work better. It doesn't mean something. And I think that that's why we're all served. And at the end of the day, if we can do that better, by communicating more, by understanding each other more, and by identifying needs and uh, creating a plan, yeah, I mean, why not? I think that's where, uh, so the idea would be to do it before the end of this month, though, because we don't want to let this whole year go away. And the friends, it's traditional, I mean, uber focused on events, so much rocks, color on, carkerium, when they were before. Uh, things like that, where we're expanding a ton of our hearing, we raise, you know, four or five thousand dollars in expenses. What we're trying to use to implement is like annual funds. And stewarding donors to, to get large donations. For working on grants, I mean, all of these things are things that we, our industry do, we have language, don't have experience, uh, don't have a strategic plan to execute. So we wanna start from the foundation. You know, we've really developed a lot of great momentum, going from raising like five thousand to sixty to a hundred thousand a month. But essentially, there's more. And in order to achieve that, we need to really have a structural foundation in place and a, a plan. And it doesn't, it's not depending on me being the president or Ellen being here as a consultant, or any of us that we have a plan in place that it can be replicated by whoever's in the arch. And in order to do that, we need to start somewhere. And this is the place that we're asking to start.
Wow, a hundred percent. I think, I think it's a lot, Denver, that there's a, there's a connection between the front of the board, um, and the need to be. I mean, there's, there's a strategic plan and then the strategic plan that we have, where there was a connection. And in times when we, it got lost during COVID, or maybe the war COVID, for sure. Um, and there was a way where the board was supposed to be getting more to the running, and that was the strategic plan. And somewhere that got lost, uh, that can be given to each other, uh, the roles from the board to the running foundation. That's in the strategic plan. And so, I think that's what I'm hearing you were saying, in that vision of everybody's on the main page, we're going to have the same vision, which of course is surrounding the spirit of community, right? That is the part of the vision. And that's what you just said, right? In different words, but it's that's our role is to strengthen the spirit of the community. And we have to be the one working together. And I'm fully agree with you. I'm just, what Anna says, how are you going to lead that discussion? So I'm definitely agree with you. When they did the strategic plan and the tasks, there was a Jim there, so you didn't want to snow. He's like the model, right? Kind of led the discussion.
We had a consultant that led the discussion.
So, yes, somebody's gonna have to take the lead.
Wait, for. But you're, you're not for the retreat.
Yeah, for the retreat, yes.
I think you were mentioning this, I mean, part of it, making all, you know, free stuff at the tables or sat at the.
That, and you know, if you don't wanna be as a chair, this is really getting into the meat, is, is that, what are the financial metrics that we need to know and track?
And we go over those, I mean, we, we just did the budget for this past year, so I think that's all better, fresh in our minds. Not only for, you know, twenty three holes, but also for the next, you know, five-ish year. Um, so, you know, any detailed questions, I'm a hundred percent confident we'll have answers or guidance to, you know, before this thing.
Right. And, and one key question is, how many dollars as a park district are you willing to commit to actually doing it? And how much of your staff's time are you willing? Because at the end of the day, there's internal components of this that are assigned to the front board and the, the commissioners. Is there bandwidth for it? And, and, you know, what's the point where you, you know, here's X investment? What do you have to see in terms of return to make that work well? Some ways, you know, you might end up spending ten grand, let's say, for a, a, a customer relationship management system. But you might only raise fifteen thousand dollars, but you're still out of pocket that money, you know. You're, you're going to make, have to make some financial investments that it might take, um, three years before you're, you're covering that plus getting impacts of a budget. So what is, what are the board of commissioners comfortable with? Should it be five percent of John's time? You, you know, should it be ten percent of his time? Or someone?
Yeah, it's a good question. So I think, you know, us sitting down for half a day will help.
Who really should prepare us? Who handles our social media? I mean, there, there's all kinds of questions that we have. And it's not just, well, the bunch should be doing this, the bunch should be doing that. And we're going to do what we want to do. That was, and I wanna be fair. I mean, we're down here to give a certain amount of money, we have life, we have, we have jobs, we have. Uh, all of those things. We're doing this, you know, well and good. And I contribute in the same. Uh, and at the end of the day, but are we, are we, who are the people that the park district is willing to help us? Uh, whether it's with social media or marketing or, uh, you know, helping with the fundraisers, helping to manage the customers. And again, none of us are a mystery. We're not gonna be, be able to handle all of those little details.
And, and it is, is that we're fun and play. The park district staff stays, you know, there's continuity presumably there. Is that you have to be able to build this, that it's not dependent on John or myself or any other specific board member. It has to be able to be sustained, not just, you know, by the, the entity, which is the park district, going forward. And I always use the hit the bus analogy. Can then survive someone getting hit by the bus? And it, it's a worthless exercise if all of the institutional knowledge goes down, if one or two of the players are gone. And, and that's what this is, you know, it, it's the framework that's vital.
And there's a shop light for every single board member. I mean, it's usually no more than ten years, hopefully by, having done a lot of nonprofit stuff. People get burned out, it's a lot of energy. And so, you know, for myself included. You know, I did eight years on one board and it wasn't enough. I've done six years here and I've still got more energy. But there is a shop light, and it needs to be replaceable. Maybe someone else can step in my role, you know, Ellen, I mean, all of this. That, and we need to have these conversations on who is the person, who is the personnel, what are the systems that we have in place that allow me to step out of someone else's step line? And that we're raising the, the, the kind of money that our business really needs and need their operating. I mean, this isn't just a question of, wouldn't it be nice if the friends could raise more money? We need it. We need to respond. Uh, so we need to develop a ministry, provide the resources that y'all, that we all.
So again, completely agree. I wonder, is there any kind of model that, that if something is to, to walk away with more interest? I guess so.
Well, again, I'm not a professional consultant, fundraising consultant, I have some fundraising training, but I think it's more than I'm capable of. I think there are models that, that if, if we're talking about.
John's time, what's, I don't know. Right, what's the, is that something that will, and we're. Right, checking, there are maybe hundreds of dead, well, you should be willing to like five percent, but he, I think, maybe that's, I don't know, it's my, to get the job done.
And, and an institution like Lake Forest Academy that has a school is giving about ten percent of his time to funders. And i- in a campaign setting, it might at certain times jump up to twenty five percent of their role. Um, so if you're trying to raise, like, they were a multimillion dollar comprehensive campaign, it was far more of their time. So it's those sorts of the questions, though, is then John's in a room saying, yo, wait a minute, you're asking me to give you, you know, a hundred and fifty percent of my time right now, what am I going to relinquish? That, that's why that's the word commissioner question and being posed in this room. You know, what, maybe it isn't John, maybe it's a Jim Laitman, you know, or, or I don't know what that sign means. Um, but that's why posing it collaboratively i- is, is important because you're the one to manage in essence through John. And he needs to be able to say, okay, if you, if you want me to dedicate this time, what is it that you want me to take off my plate? Cause my, my week doesn't get any longer, you know, can it reasonably get longer? I don't know. And, and do we, can, maybe what it is, is we have problem solving. Is there a way to accomplish this in a, in a u- unique way? Are there people, you know, with Jim and the voice count experience? Maybe he's really good at X, Y, and Z of the fundraising component. And, and Wolf had the accounting piece and he'll oversee that. And then John is doing the major gift piece. You know, maybe it's split among many and it's five percent of each of their time. But then it, it, it's, but you all have to endorse something. And they, and you have to have staff that doesn't revolt because they're like, wow, I'm doing five jobs already.
But that's why we're proposing coming together and have these conversations about us, really, 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 okay, here are these, these reordings. We're gonna, and these are the staff's needs, because, you know, you can't just say, well, work more, work four hours. That's not fair. So at the end of the day, what we're trying to do is to have this conversation, to stop the old, be honest with each other, and say, what's real, what's? And, and maybe you'll say, okay, well, the parents only raised two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is that enough to devote tons of staff time and energy? Maybe it's not. But that's a conversation that you have once we kind of develop the framework and say, what is possible? Uh, and I think it is possible to raise a significant amount of money, but we need the framework and we need the support and energy. Because just the volunteers on the front, I believe that is currently in practice, that is not going to get it done, not gonna get it done, you need it to do that.
John, Ellen, and again, thank you all very much. Um, and we will look forward to finding a retreat, so we go.
Couple of this one. Say, the sooner the better, it's looking at the quarter, excuse me, and my board has the energy right now. So, I mean, people are excited about it, I think we, we got it, and we thought it mattered today. Their time is about creating something different, about changing the way we do what we do structurally, so that we can really get profit. So I don't wanna leave that energy right now.
And, and, you know, if worse came to worse, if we have to sit there and say, okay, the, the, the friends have to meet separately, what we can do is push uphill and say, these are all the things that we're challenged by, or that we need answers and solutions in partnership with you. So there's no one right way to get this done. There, there can be multiple ways, but it could, maybe it could be there's key members that are at initial go of this.
Go for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Well, as always, thank you for all you.
You're welcome.
Have a good night, John.
Yes, so they, it'll work the, uh, the December, I think we've already discussed that, um, at our last meeting, but, uh, had a call with the operating engineer, Steve Waters, on Friday. They had a frequent meeting this week on Wednesday, and a golf meeting, so. Well, George Russell agreed to go on behalf of the park district, um, and they can start with some of the other villages too, and then, uh, Noah, uh, you know. And I mean, well, they are finishing up all the, you know, current buying, final contract, all that right now, but it's still. I'm starting, trying to get some work started in January, but the context is possible that they can still stay on the original. I'm planning to, it's been, eventually finished by, uh, home world, I think it's twenty one or four. And, uh, southeast New York, and maybe don't have some activities etc. to do, but, uh, it looks like they are funded with, for the, the park district and MOU, it's open, you know, Friday with our attorney, Scott Kuma. Um, and he is, uh, arranging meeting with, he spoke with Andrew, the attorney at, uh, at the Derna. He is trying to set up that meeting with the village attorney that was against the village. Probably for us to work out on paper of the problems between the park district and the village. This is in time, the park district's name, the property in order to put it out, property schedule, so. He felt it's possible that we could have an MOU, and then we can develop another twenty third for the board, that's the whole fight now. And they are, they spoke with Steve about the outside planning, you know, the sort of supporting residents, or when it's gonna start and what's gonna be done, as well as, um, you know, sending out letters and uh, to consider the message from the park district, the village, uh, the local, who are residents that are gonna be affected by, uh, obviously, the closure of our beach parking lot, like construction, probably for our neighbors and all, you know. The other stuff that's gonna go on, the project of this and how you do this, so. Be working on that and sending, uh, sending out a message, working out the, uh, joint new letter with the village, or, right now, so, to be in the main, to build a snap, and, uh, or starting a letter. Very gentle, but, uh, that's about all I can think of for the project, what's really important is.
I can just hope that a lot of the communication being done by the village, since the village, the village, the, um, North Village was, I hope it's not too much of a burden. There's most of that part of these not.
Yeah, they're, um, they are really working on a message, and you just wanna, uh, have a coordinated message to work, saying the same thing, same day, not all, uh, so we're free to message yourself.
Are we doing the, uh, early night?
In the, in the, the credit program, I, uh, we could, well, we definitely have it in there, but we still haven't put it in there. I mean, whole of friend is smaller. Urban, and the larger urban is, is the more private one. Uh, but they, I think North Board talked about some of the mailing, they can put out the writing.
Whether you look for, uh, Shaw, or Ranshows, or Salem Rogers, uh, we, we have the same message that's being put out.
We're, we'll put it in the bigger groups that are on the website, um, you know, we can create a mobile app or this project for information related to the beach project. Uh, and then did bring up one other, I mean, probably needs to schedule a, uh, um, parking beach committee meeting here, uh, later to discuss, um, the church is offered to rent all of their then, definitely put on a central beach area where they can still hold their server down here, um, Sunday, then they can be used. server down here on Sunday, then they can be used for Rainbow Road and, uh, the big operating company. Uh, and so it would be, you know, something like what, the law force would have out there in the past, you know, event uh, having duties and, uh, we take our insurance and several, but it would take up some space. Um, it's, it's still a little too small. Um, so the north side, they actually follow the south open and beyond that, the the south, you know, the room on the outside, they're overflowed, they don't fit in the door, and there's no, that's the problem. But they just won't fit, uh, doing the, they want to, uh, rent a lot of, a large engine and areas with overflow and. But we just need to talk about that, some of the things with the, you know, whether we'll allow them to eat something or, uh, you know, uh, that horse, uh, things like that down there, given our limited space. Uh, so staff will have to run the day, but, you know, really the committee needs to, uh, consider that. Uh, I think, and we've already mentioned about the lake forest, uh, often are, are, uh, sampling that time of work. So we're looking, still looking for some other possible options, but I mean, that happened for a summer, but not even for now.
The, uh, homework.
Uh, the last time they were talking, they were with us and we attended Lake Forest, we met with staff. And it was more promising when we met with staff, except for the animal park, their attorney and their insurance, because they're not, it's not work. So, um, yeah, also looking both, you know, working in, they, they were walking and, uh, maybe as well. And they had a mention there, they were with staff, we, uh, tried to go over it.
So program, we know which reports to the, to the.
Sheriff's Attorney and one of the staff of the.
Did they, oh, right.
Uh, they didn't really go into the revenue going.
What are the agents?
Like, they run. They can run their own scam and camp and stuff. Well, they're, they're, you're correct, they're actually involved in, she was pretty hopeful. And and knows that our programs vary itself, and their programs also. He, you know, was very, uh, willing to credit family of all. Once we got down there with the rest of their staff, the department, this, you know, it seemed like there's going to be a little bit bigger challenge. And then, then they went back and talked to the attorney and insurance and stay back with us.
I mean, both the thing, the program, the new water, they have branch, you can never do that. So it's very good. Our meeting, the whole schedule, uh, first, B two B is in front of them. We're starting. Uh, all right, uh, let's hear our agenda once the, uh, topic came up previously, which we need to address this board. Now we can policy to favor, uh, patterns through email as well as solving problems people who are needing, um, is a board probably, um, need to refine equally how our policy may change in order to be able to be effective and also, uh, uh, purpose misses by the, uh, um, because especially the emails that have been coming, you know, the specific report, we need to move towards someone on staff, someone on the board, um, or pardon the individual, or the one we ensure that, you know, the policy in place to be able to establish support to, uh, commit or not. So, um, attached to the agenda are the first son of mother producers, sort of the air suggested language for all the time. Um, just to kind of give an idea as to how we will look at this. And this really right now, just to point things out, we'd say, who are we be, the municipal, what's not municipal right now? We don't, we allow, um, so that everybody can post for a hundred and twenty minutes. Uh, so we really need to look at how we want to curtail, uh, the study. I began to say, I thought we discussed this a couple of weeks ago. We do, we listen to the services, use those particular areas. Right now, we have, but we'll certainly be, um, we have a, we, we, we just, uh, John in this case has been very effective and efficient to say, uh, somebody just wrote in about, um, uh, injury protection, to be able to focus because it can be legal, you know, the publisher. But if someone does, then, you know, that is not a state is, um, that's it. Um, or is anything that, uh, we, one policy issue we have been forced to make sure that we, that is true. So you'll talk to, you know, that's not what I mean for so many time, but. Is there anything else that they need that the fact that sense you not be? We did not, maybe this is always able to pull from some of the other court policy manuals around. And so, you know, they have public comment, they have the remarks, it's all there, like, we didn't, uh, John, um.
I did that, then my email, my memo, okay, too, that's what it does to me, because we're bringing you, you know, and so the one thing that you didn't do was the draft that was being scored on you, you know, the problem go with it. So that's why I can't. We, uh, policy that was down before the public statement, we have in the meeting, you know, for public statements, you can, you can add, you could write saying a individual for now. You can address the whole board, if that's a, you know, we can have the summer where, uh, but the deal then to an individual now on meetings, like that, addressing individuals who didn't, so I have uh, that person, you address the whole and not an individual. So we had a policy, um, we'll give them that, that you can carry again, uh, you know, they sort of thing, but we didn't do that for the email. We said, your new email, so if you want to, uh, address all the board, you can fill out a form in the email and just click, yeah, the mail, if you want a strong meeting, and say, well, it's like, yeah, fuck, you know, we have to meet someone certain, you know, civilian or, you know, standing that that, uh, in order to be included with the needed, you know, as, uh, you know, going to the public record. So they didn't, you know, the event or the example we had all that one day, maybe playing November, which, you know, makes different comments about different staff, which, you know, the mid-decent of the bribe or remark about one of the staff. That's one of the things that, you know, our department became to be what, he that others going to be the package. Uh, we, we would have a big one, probably before the half, oh, you know, of that. Uh, so that's why I was like, that's the move in the board, is there a temper, you know, of your email?
We do have like a third conduct, and we should be very smart to put a conduct. So whatever we expect, so maybe they will personally, it is in emails. And if they're not following the rules, then I mean, I should be told. You.
No, I don't. Slam it, should be, it's, it's from one of the persons here, and all of these, and also.
Exactly.
And that's why I don't think it should be out, that's why. That was my other issue that I had with it was being able to be anonymous, taking hot topics, you know, staff, that you mentioned, you know, if you said something worked, I wasn't, we're, you know, it could be a lot of it. And, you know, so then what are our practices for the second model, you know? Uh, so I, I agree with that, that was the problem that I had, that it was anonymous and, you know, a little bit of this game, really, you know, of, of.
What, 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 what do you mean, what do you think? We did a lot of, yeah, um, on this one, because we believe a policy in place, but it's been attempted to allow. Well, it's, but we say, we make this very broad instantly, that, um, president and the board have discretion, um, with email to attach to, not to, we have the rest of the, we don't know if it has some support or a problem or not. But we can be very loyal to the sense, uh, kind of thing, why, I mean, like, for good reasons, last time, we were a lot thinner, you know, and, and.
Absolutely, and that one, that was. That one, that was a lot, we, we went backwards, about, uh, email, where did they come from? And there's email, and it was, one of us made out, you know, it was watching, playing law park district, and, yeah, so they, they made it specifically for, you know, doing this.
Yeah, I, I don't see why the board should be, be the decision, because they have the same as well. If people come here and make a statement, we see them. We know they are, they made a statement, it's in ball, and, and email should be the same applies. And and they're not related to have their email, no, they're, sorry, we don't know.
Well, I think that, that the priorities for that plus to really board to get email, to be able to get the wrong email, you know, right? To have been reading that email, to send that, even like your goal, to the right, you know, board and itself. Uh, so I think that was the primary, uh, it's, it's all that was spending the primary reason was to get that directly to the board, it was the examples that, uh, present the ability to normal, most of the similar levels of markets where, where this part of the village, where they need to get feedback, it's rather, and it goes directly to that board. Uh, and so I think that was in secondary, but completely, the package was a part of that public factor. Uh, didn't really go through any, you know, office or any, you know, style, etc.
And we guys are just not saying that you don't have to be a resident to come in and speak. And so we may not be able to require them be ready, but I think, what I do want is to get some person that's all about taxes, and they go all over the place to different places, you know, in the inbox.
So we show you right, I do remember Scott said, if you don't, legally, they don't have a state that ran, so whether it's in or not, I would be going to have the legal.
If, so when they submitted online, is anonymous like a drop-down choice, or did they just choose to fill that in in the name?
Uh, I'd have to pick a, look, I had, I don't, I think it was.
Yes, I think.
Yeah, it could be something, if we could sell it, you know, required, you know, that they have to find what it, you know, sign.
Some sort of direct. Thank you.
Or not, yeah.
Too, so. Would, would we have to ask the, would you have, I know the college show, but the.
It did, yeah, I could, I reached out to Rue, and it's the, the school district as well, and Rue responded under that description, but this was somewhat powerful, but they do a little bit different depending on what they have, but it required that it's an information to their board. And they do, uh, I think, I remember from his email credit, determined this appropriate to share, they really have a kind of problem, and he says, sorry, here, here, had an issue, so we had, into one, I didn't think. That one, email concern, you know, that was shared before. They, he, I think they break up the type, like, the check box at the bottom right here, like, have you read the terms and conditions of this, right? Good hires. It's all about, so. Yeah, the term, you have to revise the code of conduct that we have, and then you have some blaming to the, to the impact of Lake Paul Park District, it reserves the right to move any comments and violate any, I like, otherwise inappropriate.
Well, and something we want to make it too, I agree, because if Donald's doc fills something out, you know, like, he, 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 the, the, there's no algorithm that's going to stop that from, you know, putting that into a form. And so we don't, so we know that it's not a name, it should also be that.
Right, which I think within covered by what, so we've been there to write to you, you know, all this.
Definitely.
Yeah, that was against, well, it's that, if they can try to write it down with, it's in, you know.
So that's the email itself, so then our policy regarding this would be for one? We can, we're, 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 um, for.
Well, and we have the call, kind of, as far as the public participation, or making our, our policy man.
We don't think, for you.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, this is, this addresses, just policy.
Okay, so emails should inform the, 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 and then the, uh, board gives discretion to or exactly, for the, for the, it's not you, 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 it's not you. It is almost like, take this language as better policy, and instead of saying, well, we permit, say, will not be shared. Emails if we have this content will, will not be considered, uh.
Oversteak.
Yeah, probably, it's more, more, one for the public.
So there, two other questions to send please, to the, any reason to we need for any policy manual that says we will respond? Or just in their.
No, I think you say that, like, it's clear to start, that's, uh, yeah.
This is, unless you want to say, they can be all, they're all that, thank you for your information, this is, this is what I want.
Yeah, but differently, in, you know, I research, I said, in every, create your email, we follow, care of this, like, there's a lot of shares, and people didn't understand, so I might um, share, so I would require, you sort of see, but, but I would.
But. All right, anything else, somebody else? That would be the mandate, for the very open, but it's a space to ensure that we have, and then we do our statement that for all the patient, there is. Yeah, yeah, okay. Anything else? I think second question about our conversation, it's, um, is there a way to do this, um, strategy session and know the, um, regulations, the, um, requirement, yeah. Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay, it's very, yeah, it is from the village who there is in foremost, call it statement, so we, I figured it was one of the.
Do more of an issue, one, maybe.
But I think, I think they are, they, the brass are really looking for, um, cooperation and, um, again, Jen, she said, there's a statement, it's internal, and they really want to dial over the one, make sure that we are students. There's a, it's strategic meaning, do you want to do anything in terms of allowing people to speak? I mean, is it, would it be appropriate to minimize that public talk, especially, I don't think this is one we want to get into.
No.
No, this is still being done in the same way, so the charters, I think this is. But it's not a, I have never mentioned to you, like, it's honest, great ones, right?
Because we have to still follow the, our, our.
And we have to stay in the visitors, as per committee, all of that.
Okay. I think what we need to do is kind of, I, I want to get better of the, from, um, John, um, say, we're giving something. Someone said two hours, four hours, and, you know, what, and there's commitments, and strange, we want to go to. We're unsure, well, I was concerned, yeah, we said that, okay, thinking day or weekend, weekend or weekday, John, it's not a good idea.
Would it be appropriate to have a screen? You can give that rule for that.
That's a good question, because again, the, the conversation started off with a two hour, and then a four hour, then this, you know, how it ended again, the whole new.
Maybe if the assignment we all have. Yeah, it's a good idea, because if we're going to do it on the item of meetings, so if you have that here, your commission here, your friends are joined. But then they can generalize, you know, if the meeting is going well, and you'll sit a few hours, and your talk, yes, so. So if you did it in lieu of the, the, well, then you know how to work with it, so that might be a, consider.
That's.
I just want to clarify, for the benches now. We're purchasing Canada iron powder, going to the benches that last, you know, three point five years itself. We used to have different, did originally by wood benches, it didn't pull up very well on the shelf, also with memorial fees. You know, we live within the purview of where we're taking them, uh. Over one, you know, and it's, it might not be, but I'm going to agree to place, we're pretty busy here. Uh, um, so I will, I'll be in that, so we gave about those, but. It's going, we're trying a little bit more for those benches now, we're using the, the prime line here, but, uh, over one. Nine groupages, uh.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, they realize it's very, they're very heavy, so.
Do you even, this is a lot, do you, men, just because not only, well, who deserves it, so they're going to.
Yeah, that is.
They're very challenging.
Yeah.
They're wondering, are you doing?
Did you, did you?
If you do want to apply for, it's all, it's all right.
So we, we did relocate one, you know, probably seen them as walking in from the beach on the. We had relocated one that you can be in that area of, you know, that time or if there's any more rock. That, that was following the. One of the. Yes.
Good evening, uh, we, 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 so I'm. I'll driven.